Call to order the New Kent County Board of Supervisors, January thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, meeting to order. Mr. Hathaway, will you come up and lead us in an invocation and pledge?
Would you stand with me, please? Our Father and our God, we are so grateful to be able to come together as a community tonight, especially as we begin this new year. We pray for our leaders, Lord, that you would give them wisdom as they make decisions that affect our whole community. And Lord God, even as we gather, we lift up those in California whose lives have been disrupted by the fire. Remind us that whatever affects one in our nation affects all of us, and so grant us a heart of compassion. Bless all that we say and all that we do to your glory and honor is our prayer. In your son's name we pray. Amen.
Join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dr. Hathaway, as always. Ms. Watkins, will you call the roll?
Mr. Evelyn?
Here.
Mr. Moyer?
Here.
Ms. Pearson?
Here.
Mr. Steers?
Yeah.
And Ms. Stewart?
Here.
I'd like to welcome everyone here this evening to our annual reorganization of the board, which we do every January. So with that, I will turn it over to our county administrator, Mr. Hathaway. Mr. Hathaway?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board. At this time, I will open the floor for nominations for the position of chair to serve during the twenty twenty-five calendar year.
Mr. Hathaway, I'd like to nominate Mr. Thomas Evelyn as chair for the next calendar year.
Thank you. Okay, we have a nomination of Mr. Evelyn. As chair, is there a motion to close the nominations?
I make a motion to close.
And at this time, we'll have a roll call vote. Ms. Watkins?
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Nay.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Abstain.
All right, thank you. At this time, I will ask for a motion to elect the chair to serve the twenty twenty-five calendar year.
I make that motion to elect the chair.
And that being Mr. Evelyn, who has been nominated. And I'm sorry, I'm reading from my... We do need a vote. Okay. And at this time, I will call for a vote for Ms. Watkins.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Nay.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Abstain.
All right. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Well, it's always our custom to thank and show our appreciation to those that have served as chair during the previous year. And Mr. Evelyn, I want to thank you for serving as the twenty twenty-four chairman, and congratulations for twenty twenty-five.
Thank you. Well, thank you, very humbling. Again, I would like to thank most of my board members for their support again for chairman. No question, last year had some challenges. I'm hopeful this year is going to be better, but not quite sure about that yet, but we will see. Next, I will open the nominations for vice chair. Mr. Chair, I nominate Ron Steers for vice chair. Thank you, Mr. Moyer. Ms. Watkins, poll the members, please.
Mr. Steers?
Abstain.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye. Next, I'll entertain a motion to close nominations for vice chair.
I'll make that motion.
Close nominations for Mr. Steers as vice chair. Ms. Watkins, poll the members, please.
Mr. Steers?
Abstain.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye. Next, the motion to elect Mr. Steers as vice chair.
I'll make the motion to elect Ron Steers as vice chair.
Thank you, Ms. Pearson. Ms. Watkins, poll the members, please.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Abstain.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye. Congratulations, Mr. Steers.
Thank you.
Next, the election of the clerk and deputy clerk for twenty twenty-five.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to... I move to elect Rodney A. Hathaway as clerk of the board and Wanda F. Watkins as deputy clerk of the board, each to serve a term of one year.
Thank you, Ms. Pearson. Ms. Watkins, poll the members, please.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Congratulations, Ms. Watkins and Mr. Hathaway. I have much choice. Next, we need to approve our meeting schedule. I know there's a few issues with some dates, so... I guess we'll just kind of go down January. Does anybody have any issues with Januars?
I need to change the work session date. There's three work sessions that conflict with my commission meetings at the Workers' Comp Commission, so if we could change those by a couple of days, that would be great.
All right, so January twenty-eighth. Twenty-ninth, does that work for me? Twenty-seven?
Yes.
Okay. So you want to keep a... Can you keep these changes, Ms. Pearson, so when we approve it, you can?
Yes.
All right. All right, February, I have an issue with the twenty-fifth. I'm good either way, twenty-fourth or twenty-sixth. Mr. Steers, Ms. Stewart? All right, February twenty-fourth. March, any issues?
I have a conflict with March. Twenty-third.
I'm good Monday or Wednesday.
So about the work session?
Yes. March twenty-first.
I am also.
I'm not available on the twenty-fourth.
Okay.
Twenty-sixth?
Twenty-sixth is...
Okay.
March twenty-sixth?
April.
Good, until September.
Anybody issues in April? May? June? Oh, Ms. Stewart?
I'll save. Mr. Chair, I cannot do the May twelfth date for the meeting. I would propose either May seventh or the following week, the twentieth or twenty-first or nineteenth. I'll be out that whole week of the twelfth.
Well, our work session is the twenty-ninth.
Twenty-seventh.
Oh, no, I'm talking about the month before, April twenty-ninth. Yeah, and then May. Is it the fifth, maybe? What about the sixth?
I'm fifth or sixth works on mine.
Actually. Is fifth good with everybody?
Yeah, but we just met on April twenty-ninth.
But that was... Well, May is usually when we have a public hearing for the budgets. We'll definitely have something to mean by the end of May.
Okay.
Would the nineteenth be better or the twenty... Or the fifth?
Well, you can't take action ten days after the public hearing. I would say the earlier, the trouble, and better, but then the May work session, we could take action in the budget.
May fifth, all right.
My wife's birthday.
All right, June's good. July? August? September?
I have... I have an issue with the work session in September. So could we do it the twenty-ninth? Oh, wait, not the twenty-ninth. Yeah, the twenty-ninth, if everybody's okay with that. Oh, wait. I'm going to be in Germany. Wait a minute.
Well, the board meeting's the eighth that month, so I mean, we could...
Maybe the...
Twenty-third, the week before.
Mr. Chair, I just realized, when I said May fifth, that conflicts with the currently scheduled school board meeting.
They're meeting in May, too, though, aren't they?
September twenty-ninth does work.
September twenty-ninth?
Yes. I'll be back from October.
On October seventeenth?
You got an issue with that? All right, does anybody else have any other issues?
Are we going to keep the fifth of May?
School's over, I mean. I don't have any issues unless the board does, want to change it.
Even though May fifth was my suggestion, I think we should try to deconflict as much as possible, or... But I would have to look at another date, because you... Somebody said they weren't available on the sixth, right? Did somebody say that?
That's May, we talked about May. Okay. I'm available that week or something, whatever. Want to do it the sixth?
Yeah, the sixth is good.
We back to May?
Sorry, that was fine, but maybe you said the sixth.
No, I didn't. I said May... Fifth is my wife's birthday, but she would abstain.
Yeah, so more importantly, May fifth is Timmy Steers' birthday, so we can't do a meeting that night.
She wouldn't mind.
May sixth.
It's not like we just got married.
All right.
All right. You want to make a motion?
All right.
The twelfth changed to the sixth. Yeah, this one.
Six, okay.
All right. Ms. Pearson, you have a motion?
Yes. I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the twenty twenty-five meeting schedule as presented, except for January twenty-eighth. The work session will be on January twenty-seventh. The February twenty-fifth work session will now be on February twenty-fourth. The March twenty-fifth work session will now be on March twenty-sixth. The May twelfth regularly scheduled meeting will now be on May sixth. And the September thirtieth work session will now be on September twenty-ninth.
Thank you, Ms. Pearson. Ms. Watkins, will you poll the members on the meeting schedule for twenty twenty-five?
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye. Thanks for putting up with that. Next item on the board is... On the agenda is the consent agenda. Anybody have any questions, comments? Bylaw amendments. No. Sorry, thank you. All right, there are some changes on the bylaws that are being recommended. Does anybody have any questions or concerns? Since there are changes, we have to wait thirty days before we can vote on the bylaw. So...
Basically, you're just putting chair instead of chairman, right? And shall, must instead of shall.
It's cleaning up a couple of inconsistencies in the language. There is one, a couple substantive suggestions from the legal department and the finance department. Finance director is here with us today. With the financial controls, there is a suggestion. Page eight. And that's in paragraph A, section two, and I believe that the finance director would be happy to explain these changes for us. And I'm happy to exchange, explain the other ones.
Even members of board, the suggested adjustment is to remove some language that restricts the county administrator from being able to make transfers between personnel and operating lines within departments. Currently, the structure is that all transfers between personnel, in and out of personnel lines, have to come to the board for approval. This change would allow for a little, I guess, more flexibility when it comes to doing the transfers, less transfers that come to you. Also, it eliminates a little bit of the administrative reporting end when it comes to year-end financials. Currently, we have to present a separate report on our legal level of budgetary control because of the language in our bylaws per the GFOA, because we have that they view our budget split as personnel and operating by department. So I have to reproduce essentially a sixty-page report that goes out with our ACFOR at the end of the year. This would reduce that, kind of combine those two documents to where you could see just budget by department as a separate exhibit in one more streamlined document. You still have the same level of control between departments, between funds, and capital lines as well.
Any questions? Did this come out the audit report?
It's been a little bit of a, I guess, a topic of conversation in the finance department since twenty twenty-two, when we did our GFOA award, and they noted that we needed to begin producing this report because of the language in the bylaws. It's a rare occasion, you know, throughout anywhere that kind of applies for the GFOA, having such a strict level. Happy to maintain it if it's the board's will, but that's just my one suggestion for some administrative changes.
Anybody have any comments?
Mr. Chair, I had a question. Ms. Pearson, is this... Does this make sense to you, and is this your best practice?
Yeah, I'm just wondering why it was put in place in the first place. That's the only, only thing that was just going through my head. I don't think it would be a problem at all, especially if the GFOA recommends it.
It's not a huge change, but again, you guys will still see all the transfers go between departments, so if any department does run over their budget, the appropriation authority still lies with you.
I would say it's fine.
I don't have any problem with it.
And with respect to the other changes, some of them are more language-based, administrative. The word shall's been interpreted about eleven different ways by the court, so I tried to use the word that the courts would then use instead of the word shall, so that you know what you're going to get. Some things, like, we refer to a chair and a chairman, or a vice chair and a chairman, I just made them the same. Some numbers are written different ways, I made that consistent. There's some points where we refer to a resolution for some meetings. Some meetings do not require a resolution. The order of business was altered to reflect the actual order of business that the board actually follows in our agenda every meeting. Pointed out in the quorum and method of voting section that there are rules in the Conflict of Interest Act regarding abstentions, and so put in some language that the relevant sections of the Conflict of Interest Act must be followed when you're abstaining due to that rule. Under section F, put in a comment that, or any applicable county ordinance or state law, when it talks about the governance of Roberts rules, in some rare circumstances, such as zoning, Roberts rules might, while they are applied by our bylaws, kind of get in the way. So just put that in there, that the overarching Virginia code or county ordinance trumps these rules and Roberts rules. Put in a note about recorded roll call votes, this is the practice of the board. Put in a comment about the confidentiality of closed sessions, this is pretty common. And then rewrote a couple other places where the language, I think, could be clarified. There was also an addition in article seven for the Board of Supervisors appointing either a member of the board, and then added, or the county administrator. It's my understanding that since twenty twenty-three that the board has appointed the county administrator as the director of emergency management, so just made that change to reflect that practice. And then finally, one of the bigger ones is added in article ten at the end, this should be on your last page, that just makes it clear, this is indicative of existing Virginia law. The bylaws are something that is created by the board for the board, and just makes it clear that, it doesn't create a cause of action or right of action. The board actually has the ability to, during a meeting, to dispense with the rules or suspend the rules if it so chooses. So this just makes it clear to someone reading it that when the board uses these rules, it's for its own benefit and its own convenience. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
I do have one. Chief Barber's here, but when you talk about, I think the Board of Supervisors, county administrator, I think it's the chairman, this most time has been, is the director of emergency management, and then he normally, then he in turn appoints the fire chief as the coordinator of emergency management coordinator, is that correct, chief?
Yes.
My understanding is that Mr. Hathaway was appointed last year? Do you think so?
That's what I... Because when you go to appoint, if you go to the...
Oh, you're talking about as the coordinator for, who in turn will appoint a coordinator of emergency management, coordinator of emergency services?
Because if you look at the appointments of the director, if you go down on the agenda...
Uh huh.
If the chair does not want to serve as director, then he, then he, or she would appoint, that's what Mr. Tiller did a couple of years ago.
So is it the, I guess, is the will of the board to have that ability? Cause, cause currently, as the bylaws are currently written, it would be a member of the board that would have to be the director. And then the director, that board member as director, would appoint a coordinator. It wouldn't have the option, the board wouldn't have the option of, of choosing the county administrator as the director of emergency services. I can make the change either way.
Well, let me talk about it, it's not like we're voting on it tonight.
Right. And just to that point, um, Mr. Chairman, so under the current bylaws, um, any amendment to the bylaws can be made by a recorded majority vote 30 days after prior written notice of the amendments. So, um, any changes to this would be 30 days after notice was first given of these amendments.
Well, actually, I don't know if we can. This is actually, I mean, I guess we, we won't have to be able to vote on that, that tonight, because that is on appointments of director and coordinate emergency on tonight's agenda.
That's a good point. The board could withhold that vote, uh, for the director of emergency services until the bylaws are changed.
Man, it's been like this for 18 years, I know.
Right, and again, the bylaws are for the convenience of the board, and state law says that it could be a board member or, uh, the county administrator, the chief administrative officer, which in New Kent County is the county administrator. And, uh, was Mr. Hathaway, were you appointed last year as the director?
No.
No, okay, it was Mr. Evelyn.
Mr. Tiller was appointed and then I guess.
Yeah, he was appointed, Mr. Tiller was, and then he designated Mr. Hathaway.
Yeah.
Right.
So I guess depending, the board could also suspend with the bylaws and appoint for whom it may.
At the end of the day, chief, they're, they're doing the work anyway, so.
And I, I think the, the language that has been proposed still allows for the chairman of the board to be appointed. So I think we can still make that appointment today.
Any other? Do you have any other comments?
We can vote on them tonight, or no?
Not the bylaws.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions on the bylaw? Here we make it. All right, next item is the consent agenda.
We have to make that motion.
Okay, yes.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I move that the bylaws be amended as presented and that a vote on adoption be taken at a future meeting that is no less than 30 days from today's date. But we're going to leave that the way it was, or no?
We can.
But leave, I don't know where it was now, um, but leave.
I don't think, I think you're okay, I think you're fine.
The section on.
You're, you're good.
Okay.
You okay with that? Everything good with that?
Yeah.
All right, Ms. Watkins, poll the members, please.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Mooreier?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye, thank you. All right, finally, we'll get to the consent agenda. Thank you for keeping me straight. Any comments, questions, concerns? I assume everybody's had time to go over the consent agenda.
Let's see, Mr. Chair, I just had one question about the supplemental appropriation, um, section of the consent agenda. Do you want me to ask that now, or you want?
Yes.
There's a $250,000 sale of surplus property and it's under fire apparatus. Can you just explain to me how that works? Do they sell it and that what's collected from that sale goes back into their coffers, or how, what is that?
In most cases, um, sales of surplus property goes back to the, the general fund. But as you may remember, um, we've having the budget to purchase, um, a, a new ambulance, um, not ambulance, a new engine. That sales, we're proposing that 250,000 would go towards the purchase of, of another new engine.
Thank you. So that was the only question I had, Mr. Chair?
Anyone else? None, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we, um, receive and approve the consent agenda as given.
Thank you, Mr. Mooreier, Ms. Watkins, poll the members, please.
Ms. Stewart? Mr. Mooreier?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Citizens' comment period, have we, anyone signed up this evening? Thank you. We have one person signed up this evening, uh, I think he knows the routine. Mr. Smith, come up to the podium. Happy New Year.
Thank you, good evening.
Good evening.
My name is William Smith, William Smith, I live at 4240 Halliford Road in Burnsville. This evening, I want to talk about it. My concern is about McKimmy Woods property, partial recreation in the Burnsville area. My sources, some of it comes from Tyre Water Review, newspaper December 25th, 2024. I also have a quote from the late President Jimmy Carter. McKimmy Woods purchased a new Kent county with the possibility of development, developing it into a park. I talked to people around the county, they like to see that happen. I talked to Mr. Hathaway, Ms. Stewart, the lead, I mean, not the lead, but, uh, the former supervisor, Mr. Lockwood. I don't know if these people have the qualification to write this all. But I think this place should be looked at by licensed contractor, and, uh, we have several in the county. We also have outside contractors that did work in the building here. There are several contractors also outside the county, serving, that serve in New Kent County. Nothing is being said about this place, McKimmy Woods. It wasn't in the paper, I haven't heard anything. I passed the building today, the building looked nice from off the distance. It could be used as a voting precinct, can be used for recreation, a lot of things can be used for. Look at the county already has a general for spending a lot of money for the Quentin Park, the airport, vehicles for the police department. I don't know the life of these vehicles at all. Nine vehicles, a lot of vehicles placed at one time. And how much money does the airport need? And why is it necessary to build a new hangar for 18 airports? How much of, how much money is this going to bring to the county? They kind of spend their money, but it's not, I'm not sure if it's bringing money in. It kind of has listed a lot of places in the upper part of New Kent to spend money on. But nothing being spent on the lower part besides the, you know, car mags and the other place. I'm wondering what the spec of life of these vehicles. How many vehicles will the county be purchasing and how much money will it cost? And do we need them in the vehicle at one time? Let us promote equal opportunity for the whole county and not just part of the county.
All right, Mr. Smith, three minutes, but you want to give your comments to Ms. Watkins and I'm sure Mr. Hathaway and Ms. Stewart, we'll get back.
Well, I'm going to open coffee. This is a list of some of the contractors, Mike Fisher Construction, DNG Plumbing, and, uh, Joel Savage, who does reconstruction, remodeling, what do I need his experience?
Well, chief, like I said, if you give those to Ms. Watkins, I, we appreciate your comments. I think we're all in agreement that, I think we're looking at doing some, you know, some studies and McKimmy Woods and doing, McKimmy Woods, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir, in fact, I'm meeting with Plan RVA this Wednesday to start the, uh, development of a master plan for that property.
I don't know if Mrs. Smith heard that, but when he sits down, you might want to.
I'll follow up with him, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Smith is the only one signed up this evening, so I'll close the citizens' comment period. Next is the residency administrator's report. Mr. Winn, you've all been busy, happy new year.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Marshall went with BDOT, uh, for the December report. We had, um, 78 work orders completed, 93 and had two call out, after hour callouts. Been doing, been doing pothole repair, ditching and shoulder repairs, uh, grading on hard surface roads, uh, tree and brush removal and cleanup, sign repairs and replacement, uh, trash pickup across the, uh, across the county for December. This is January now, so, a couple of updates I want to let you all know about. The temporary signal with 249, 33, and 64 interchange, that's going to go live next week. I think it's the 20th second, they're going to have it operational, so be on the lookout for that. And the other item I'm sure you want to hear about is Route 60 and 155 where the span wire is. They're going to start work on that this week, I'm told. So you'll see some activity there, when it's all completed, it'll be mast arms and that sort of thing, just like 60 and, uh, 106 was done. Was that last year, Mr. Hathaway? So that, that work is going to be taking place starting this week. Other than that, I don't have anything else, not that you have any questions.
Ms. Stewart?
Let's see, Mr. Winn, I got an email today very timely from, um, a group of constituents in the colonies, and they just wanted me to express their thank you, um, for keeping the road so clear. They said it has never been cleared so quickly, so appreciation for that. And then they followed it up with, now there's a ridge in the road, 1450 Colony Trail. They called it a ridge, but it's like going like this on the pavement now. I'll take a picture and send it to you when I go past there. And then question for you, at Holly Fork and Tabernacle, the intersection where there's the stop sign, a resident asked me today if it's possible to put one of the thick white strips, yes, on the ground.
We're looking at that, we just got to wait for the temperatures to, to come up where you can put a stop bar down.
Okay, perfect, well, thank you again for everything, and my district especially appreciates it, and so do I.
Okay. Mr. Steers?
Yes, Mr. Winn, thank you for being here tonight, and just want to reiterate what Ms. Stewart said. I, I didn't have a single complaint from a single person anywhere in the county. And kudos to your guys, I mean, they were out there brining the roads a couple days in advance. Next day out, I mean, it's, I've, I've never seen BDOT work that hard to keep our roads cleared, and I just wanted to thank you for that. And if you let your crew know how much we appreciate it.
Okay, we'll do it.
Thank you.
Ms. Pearson?
I'd just like to echo what Mr. Steers and Ms. Stewart said, um, I, I honestly didn't know that the snowstorm was coming. And then when I saw you guys out on the road, I was like, oh, it's going to snow. So, but it was excellent, I mean, I didn't have any complaints either, and I live on Cooksmill Road and, um, you guys were clearing that. And so, thank you very much.
Ms. Moore?
I'll add my thanks, and, uh, you guys are the best weather forecasters we have. Cause when we see the stuff on the road, we know we're getting something. And, uh, we appreciate that, and, uh, looks like our light is working out really good at Marketplace. I don't think there's been any problems, sheriff's nodding his head, it's okay. So, uh, well, hopefully the same thing will be true for the temporary one up on, uh, 249. But thank you very much.
Okay.
Kind of echoed the same, I did get a lot, call from a lot of parents, and they were extremely happy that New Kent was going back to school earlier than most other localities. So thank you so much for getting, on behalf of the parents, for getting their kids back in school. Cause, uh, King William, King Queen, I think they were out all week, so.
We had, we had issues in Hanover and Gooseland due to the water issue.
Yeah, I know, the water, I'm not talking about King William and King Queen, they, they were out all week.
That was a big thing last week for us, trying to work with the city of Richmond, Henrico, Hanover, and Gooseland. So, I mean, luckily, we busted it hard, I mean, the temperatures didn't help us at all, but we were out till 3:30 yesterday afternoon trying to get everything cleared up.
They did a great job.
Okay.
Thank you, happy new year.
Next, uh, we have supplemental funding, uh, by Mr. Stanger, for civil security backup.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. During our FY26 capital budget discussions, um, I mentioned that the support on our existing backup solution expires in May, and I was going to find funds to carry that into the next year before we could replace it. And they suggested that we see if there was a way we could do it earlier and not have to pay maintenance on the existing solution. So we found a solution which we think is better than the one we have. It, um, and we searched for ways to pay for that once we got a quote, and that's what's before you here tonight. And I will tell you, um, and I don't think it would be any different. This one, unlike the previous ones, comes with an ongoing operational cost. Previous solutions we've done, we've bought, and then in three years, we buy it again, and we buy it with three years' worth of stuff. But this is, but the good thing about this is it is scalable, and we shouldn't have to replace it in three years. The ongoing cost would, at some point, we might have to add another device, but it, it's not like a forklift replacement, which we currently do every three years.
Anybody have any questions for Ms. Stanger?
Mr. Stanger, what would be the, um, recurring cost, do you know, approximately?
Depending on what data we use, so if we used a maximum amount, it would be close to 40,000 a year.
And that will be built into your budget for?
It is in my request for next year, yes, and this, um, it would, the 200,000 that was requested for next year that would be cut out of the capital budget request with this approval would probably have included, um, two to three beginning years in that 200,000, but, um, we would have probably purchased that together with the additional funds, but, um,
Well, I.
It's, it's costly, but.
Well, how much?
We have to have a backup, if we don't have anything else, we have to have a good backup solution.
Absolutely, cybersecurity is out there, um, at, at the top of everybody's list these days, at all state agencies as well, so. Appreciate you getting ahead of this.
Mr. Steers?
Yeah, Mr. Stanger, would, would that prevent us from being shut out of our laptops all the time? I know, I know, I understand the reason why, but it's just so, every 30 days, we're locked out and we can't, and mine usually locks me out on the weekend when. out, and we can't, and mine usually blocks me out on the weekend when I'm doing my studies and stuff, and can't find anybody to unlock it, but anyway, just thought I would ask.
Do you want me to program it on your calendar? Like a checklist? So I did that once, and it still didn't work.
You can call me anytime.
Yeah, okay, I appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
I do answer the phone or traffic.
Yes. Any other comments or questions or concerns? If none, I'll entertain a motion.
I say, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the transfer of thirty-four thousand dollars from reserve for contingency, and the transfer of eighty-three thousand, one hundred and thirty-five dollars from various operating capital line items, as described in the supporting memorandum, for a total of one hundred and seventeen thousand, one hundred and thirty-five dollars to cybersecurity for the purchase of Cohesity.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart. Another discussion. Ms. Watkins, we poll the members, please.
Mr. Mooreier?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye. Thank you, Ms. Stanger. Next, seniors volunteer hall of fame charter. Mr. Hathaway?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. I believe it was your October regular meeting, it might have been November, where you received a presentation from Mr. Green, Danny Green, who, a huge volunteer for the county, and currently serves as chair of our triad committee. But Mr. Green presented on a proposal to the Board of Supervisors, and that was to establish a seniors volunteer hall of fame. And with that proposal, he recommended that there be a selection committee created that would establish the criteria for the selection process. The selection committee would also handle the nomination process and would bring recommendations to you, so that up to three citizens, senior citizens annually, would be recognized at a Board of Supervisors meeting for their volunteering around the county. So before you is a charter to establish that selections committee, so that we can establish a seniors volunteer hall of fame program. The selection committee is proposed to consist of seven members, one member from each district, and two at-large members. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Hathaway?
Mr. Hathaway, would there be a board representative also?
Well, that's a question that I had. If you would like for there to be a board representative, that's an easy change we can add, and we can include that in the motion today.
I think that's a good idea.
Everybody okay with that? Ms. Stewart, good.
I see, Mr. Chair, I was just going to ask Mr. Hathaway, how are we defining senior? What's the threshold?
Well, the selection group that you've gone to committee would establish that criteria. Mr. Green actually suggested that it be sixty or above, eight sixty or above.
No other comments, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the resolution.
Mr. Chairman, I like to, I would like to adopt Resolution R dash oh-two-dash-two-five to establish the seniors volunteer hall of fame selection committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mooreier. Ms. Watkins, poll the members, please.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Hathaway. Our last item on this part is work authorization from requests from Bowman Consulting for survey services. Mr. Hathaway?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. You have before you a request to appropriate sixty-two thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars for surveying services to be performed by Bowman, and this is to assist with the Crump's Mill Road Improvement Project. Currently in the VDOT secondary six-year plan, there is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of VDOT funds dedicated to improving the private portion of Crump's Mill Road, bringing that road up to state standards and bringing that into the state maintenance system. It's a, it's a little over a mile stretch of private road that's currently gravel, that would have to be brought up to state standards. Now, the VDOT money can only be used for construction, and what we're proposing to do is appropriate funds from the Central Virginia Transportation Authority that's dedicated to transportation, to go towards the cost of the survey for this road. This is a road that's been on our radar for some time now. It has a little over forty residents on this road. There's been several attempts to get this road upgraded and into the state standards, but with the VDOT requirements, every single resident has to agree to it, has to agree to dedicating the right-of-way before VDOT will improve the road. And in the past, there's been a couple of holdouts, but after numerous meetings with the residents and the receipt of a petition from the community, we're confident that we have one hundred percent of the residents that have now agreed to dedicate the right-of-way. Also want to state that Bowman Consulting is one of our one-call contractors, so we have properly procured their services. We have two one-call contractors that can do survey work for the county. I've went to both of them. Bowman gave me the lowest and most responsive price.
Thank you, Mr. Hathaway. Any comments?
I just have one question, Mr. Chair. Under the section where it says fiscal implications for us, there's a line that says there may be additional costs involved for relocating utility lines that are located within the proposed right-of-way, who would that be at the cost of?
That would be negotiated, and we're working with the utility companies now. I don't believe there will be a cost from Verizon. There's two lines that will need to be relocated. There's a Verizon line within the right-of-way, and that would be under pavement, and there's a Cox line, too. We're working with both, both of those companies. I don't have pricing or an idea of the cost. I hope to have that soon, but that could be an additional cost. It is a cost that we can use Central Virginia Transportation funds for, if it's the responsibility of the county, and we're still working on that.
Thank you.
Any other comments, concerns, questions? If not, I'll adjourn the motion. This is my district.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to authorize the county administrator to execute the proposed work authorization for surveying services needed to create a right-of-way for the private portion of Crump's Mill Road. I further move to appropriate sixty-two thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars from the Central Virginia Transportation Authority Fund for the reference survey services.
Thank you, Ms. Pearson. Ms. Watkins, we poll the members.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Mooreier?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Hathaway. We have no public hearings scheduled this evening. The next item on the agenda is the elected officials' report. Mr. Mooreier?
I have my nine o'clock Tuesday, third Tuesday of the month sidewalk committee meeting at Journey Church. Anybody that wants to talk about anything to do with District Two? We have, they have a really nice coffee shop, a lot of people are there, so that makes for a good meeting place. That's the third Tuesday of the month. This month, it's the twenty-first at nine o'clock AM. And we are going to try to have one or two in the later evening, too. That's it.
Thank you. Ms. Pearson?
I just want to wish everybody a happy new year. Hope you have many blessings in twenty twenty-five coming up. I just have three events that I know of that are coming up on February twenty-second, the casino night for the New Kent Junior Women's Club, and that is for youth scholarships, programs, and charities. On March first, it's the third annual New Kent Awards Gala. Those tickets are on sale now. And don't forget on March fifteenth, the Virginia Derby, it'll be here before we know it. Thank you.
Ms. Steers?
I don't really have anything, except I was asked to be speaker at the Ruhrington Club next weekend at Brickshire, just as a guest speaker, but other than that, things have been kind of quiet. Thank you.
Ms. Stewart?
Mr. Steers, are they selling tickets to your speaking event? And can I buy one? Thank you, Mr. Chair. Please, for constituents watching this, stay tuned to Facebook. Mr. Reimer and I are setting dates right now for our February office hours. It's going to be in the Barhamsville area, so once we lock down a date and time, we will put that out. And also, just want to give a shout out again to our Department of Social Services for their outstanding Christmas program. There were sixty-one donors who assisted fulfilling a hundred and two applications, which were two hundred and seventy-eight children and twenty-seven seniors. And when I dropped off my stuff, the hallways were lined, and they were extremely busy wrapping gifts, so I know, I know what an impact they made, so just appreciation to them and all of their tireless work that made Christmas very exciting for a lot of people, but that's all.
Heard Mr. Nguyen talk about all the water issues that City of Richmond had this week, and I think Mr. Hathaway sent each board member an update. Would just kind of like to give a shout out to Mike Lang, our Public Utilities Director. I received a call from Joe Lisfield, and they were hauling water to the city, to the critical areas of, needed water to haul to the critical areas of Hanover, Henrico, and Mr. Lang and his team, and I guess in Ossetts County stepped up and got him a meter, and they were able to deliver a lot of water to the, to the critical areas. So New Kent helped out a lot during the crisis that City of Richmond had, so thank you, Mr. Lang and your team for that. And they did pay for it.
It will.
Yeah.
It will, somehow.
So, all right, any staff reports?
No, sir.
Anybody have any other business? Appointments delegated by district. I'll just, I'll start with you, Mr. Mooreier.
Oh, okay. District Two. District Two, I moved to appoint Jefferson Elliott as District Two Representative to the Historic Commission to serve as a four-year term, beginning January one, two thousand twenty-five, and ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-eight. I, I can just keep going, right? I also moved to appoint Douglas Raynor as a District Two alternate representative to the Historic Commission to serve as a four-year term, beginning January one, two thousand twenty-five, and ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-eight. I also moved to appoint Mike Salmon as a District Two Representative to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission to serve a three-year term, beginning January one, two thousand twenty-five, and ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-seven. I also moved to appoint Tammy Johnson as District Two Representative to the Planning Commission to serve a four-year term, beginning two thousand one to two thousand, two thousand one, two thousand twenty-five, January one, two thousand twenty-five, and ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-eight. Also, I moved to appoint Robert Gray as a District Two Representative to the Transportation Safety Commission to serve a four-year term, beginning January one, two thousand twenty-five, and ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-eight.
Ms. Pearson, District Three?
I moved to appoint Lynn Berlinsky as District Three Representative to the Airport Advisory Commission to serve a four-year term, beginning January first, two thousand twenty-five, and ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-eight. I moved to appoint Kathleen McMichael as District Three Representative to the Clean County Committee to serve a four-year term, beginning January first, two thousand twenty-five, and ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-eight. I moved to appoint Reverend Dr. Milton Hathaway as a District Three Representative to the Planning Commission to serve a four-year term, beginning January first, two thousand twenty-five, and ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-eight. That's all I have for tonight.
District Four, Ms. Steers?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I move to appoint John Noble as District Four Representative to the Airport Advisory Commission to serve a four-year term, beginning January one, two thousand twenty-five, and ending December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-eight. I move to appoint Paul Robinson as District Four Representative to the Economic Development Authority to serve a four-year term, beginning January one, two thousand twenty-five, and ending December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-eight. I move to appoint Kelly Bros as District Four Representative to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission to serve a three-year term, beginning January one, two thousand twenty-five, and ending December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-seven. I move to appoint Gary LaRichele as a District Four Representative to the Planning Commission to serve a four-year term, beginning January one, two thousand twenty-five, and ending December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-eight. I also moved to appoint Wilbur Collins as District Four Representative to the Transportation Safety Commission to serve a four-year term, beginning January one, two thousand twenty-five, and ending December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-eight. Thank you.
Thank you. District Five, Ms. Stewart?
I moved to appoint Haley Canterbury as a District Five Representative to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission to serve a three-year term, beginning January one, two thousand twenty-five, and ending December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-seven. And I moved to appoint Joe Davis as a District Five Representative to the Planning Commission to serve a four-year term, beginning January one, two thousand twenty-five, and ending December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-eight.
I moved to appoint Derek Yates as District One's Representative to the Parks and Rec. Advisory Commission to serve a three-year term, beginning January first, two thousand twenty-five, and ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-seven. I moved to appoint Patricia Townsend as District One's Representative to the Planning Commission to serve a four-year term, beginning January one, two thousand twenty-five, and ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-eight. I moved to appoint George Tate Jr. as District One's Representative to the Board of Road Viewers to serve a four-year term, beginning January one, two thousand twenty-five, and ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-eight. I moved to appoint Michael Edwards as District One's Representative to the Transportation Safety Commission to serve a four-year term, beginning January one, two thousand twenty-five, and ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-eight. I moved to recommend David Frank for the Circuit Court Appointment as District One's Representative to the Board of Zoning Appeals to serve a five-year term, beginning January one, two thousand twenty-five, and ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-nine. That's all the appointments delegated by district. Any comments, concerns? Ms. Watkins, we poll the members on appointments delegated by district.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Mooreier?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye. Next appointment's not delegated by district. Let's just, let's just go down. I moved to appoint Eric Randolph as an at-large member of the Eric Alton Forest District Advisory Committee to serve a four-year term, beginning January one, two thousand twenty-five, and ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-eight. And I moved to appoint Eric Blake as an at-large member of the Eric Alton Forest District Advisory Committee to serve a four-year term, beginning January one, two thousand twenty-five, and ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-eight. Anybody? Oh, this is.
I moved.
Okay. Okay. Sorry, Mr. Steers.
That's right. I move to appoint Jeffrey Mitchell as an at-large member of the Board of Building Code Appeals Board, Fire Prevention Code Appeals, to complete a four-year term ending December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-six.
I move to appoint Cecilia Gardner as an at-large representative to the Clean County Committee to serve a four-year term beginning January first, two thousand twenty-five, and ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-eight.
I move to appoint Will Coles as a youth member of the New Kent County Youth Community Service Committee to serve a one-year term ending December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-five. Also move to appoint Kipton Nagy as a youth member of the New Kent County Youth Community Service Committee to serve a one-year term ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. And lastly, I move to appoint Caroline Bandy as a youth member of the New Kent County Youth Community Service Committee to serve a one-year term ending December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-five.
So do I have alternates of the Clean County?
Not yet.
Okay. Pam Brooks?
I move to appoint Pam Brooks as the New Kent County School Representative to the Community Policy and Management Team to complete a two-year term beginning January one, two thousand twenty-four, and ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six.
I move to appoint Matthew Starr as an at-large Representative to the Economic Development Authority to serve a four-year term beginning January one, two thousand twenty-five, and ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-eight.
I move to appoint Pat Bell as an at-large Representative to the Economic Development Authority to serve a four-year term beginning January first, two thousand twenty-five, and ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-eight.
I move to appoint Michelle Gowdy as a Representative to the Farms of New Kent Community Development Authority Board to serve a four-year term beginning January one, two thousand twenty-five, and ending December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-eight. I also move to appoint Debbie Richards as an at-large Representative to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission to serve a three-year term beginning January one, two thousand twenty-five, and ending December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-seven.
I move to appoint Robert Gray as an at-large Representative to the Purchase of Development Rights Committee to complete a three-year term beginning January one, two thousand twenty-three, and ending June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-six.
I move to appoint William Wallace III as an at-large Representative to the Purchase of Development Rights Committee to complete a three-year term beginning July first, two thousand twenty-two, and ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. Who is this? Lord Turgon? What district is that?
District Two. I move to appoint Brendan Donbroski as a youth member of the New Kent County Youth Committee, Community Service Committee, to serve a one-year term ending December thirty-first, I would say, two thousand twenty-five.
I move to appoint Camden Jones as a youth member of the New Kent County Youth Community Service Committee to serve a one-year term ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. Also move to appoint Natalie Robinson as a youth member of the New Kent County Youth Community Service Committee to serve a one-year term ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. And I also move to appoint Mackenzie Gray as a youth member of the New Kent County Youth Community Service Committee to serve a one-year term ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five.
I move to appoint Sarah Richardson as an alternative representative to the Wetlands Board, Chesapeake Bay Preservation Board, and the Dunes and Beaches Board to serve a five-year term beginning January one, two thousand twenty-five, and ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-nine. Is that it? Board members, do you have any concerns, comments on boards and commissions not delegated by district?
She has one more.
Oh, one second. Yes.
I move to appoint Kim Turner and Holly Nagy as an adult member of the New Kent County Youth Community Service Committee to complete a three-year term beginning January first, two thousand twenty-four, and ending December twenty twenty-five, and ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-seven. Something like that.
Ms. Watkins, will you call a roll on appointments not delegated by district?
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye. Next appointments of regional boards and commissions?
I move to appoint John Moyer as New Kent's Representative to the Capital Region Policy Board to serve a term beginning January first, two thousand twenty-five, and ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five.
I move to appoint Rodney Hathaway as New Kent's alternate Representative to the Capital Regional Region Policy Board to serve a term beginning January one, two thousand twenty-five, and ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five.
I move to appoint John Moyer as New Kent's Representative to the Central Virginia Transportation Authority to serve a term beginning January first, two thousand twenty-five, and ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five.
I move to appoint Amy Pearson as a New Kent's alternate Representative to the Central Virginia Transportation Authority to serve a term beginning January one, two thousand twenty-five, and ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five.
So, Mr. Moyer, you're the we need an alternate since you're is that correct? Richmond Regional Transportation Plan and Organization?
Yeah. We don't have that on the list here, but there. Who is the are you the alternate?
I'm not the alternate, but I can be the alternate because we get the same information for
Oh, this is a citizen's
Yeah, this is a citizen.
I take that back.
Let's wait.
All right, so maybe somebody can see if they come up with those. All right. And we also need Thrive Virginia, too. All right. Any other? Ms. Watkins, will you poll the members on the appointments of regional boards and commissions?
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye. All right, next appointments of board staff, board and staff appointments?
Mr. Chair, I move to appoint Mr. Ron Steers as the Board Representative to the Agricultural and Forestry District Advisory Committee to serve a one-year term beginning January one, two thousand twenty-five, and ending December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-five. Additionally, I move to appoint Mr. Steers as the Board Representative to the Airport Advisory Commission to serve a one-year term beginning January one, two thousand twenty-five, and ending December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-five. Do you guys want me to just keep going?
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, I move to appoint Amy Pearson as the Board Representative to the Clean County Committee to serve a one-year term beginning January one, two thousand twenty-five, and ending December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-five. I also move to appoint Mr. John Moyer as the Board Representative to the Historic Commission to serve a one-year term beginning January one, two thousand twenty-five, and ending December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-five. Also move to appoint Mr. Thomas Evelyn as the Board Representative to the Parks and Rec Advisory Commission to serve a one-year term beginning January one, two thousand twenty-five, and ending December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-five. I also move to appoint Mr. John Moyer as the Board Representative to the Planning Commission to serve a one-year term beginning January one, two thousand twenty-five, and ending December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-five. And lastly, I move to appoint Mr. Ron Steers as the Board Representative to the Transportation Safety Commission to serve a one-year term beginning January one, two thousand twenty-five, and ending December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-five.
I just need to point this.
And I move to appoint Ms. Jordan Stewart as the Board Representative to the Social Services Advisory Board to serve a one-year term beginning January one, two thousand twenty-five, and ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five.
All right. Ms. Watkins, will you poll the members, the appointments of board staff?
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye. Next, the appointment of Director and Coordinator of Emergency Services.
Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint Thomas Evelyn as Coordinator of Emergency Management pursuant to the Code of Virginia, Section forty-four dash one forty-six dot one nine, and as a coordinator of emergency service pursuant to County Code, Chapter thirty dash one sixty-two.
One sixty-one.
One sixty-one.
I think that was backwards. I think you should have done the top one.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Oh, that's why I was
I did not I did not scroll far enough down. It's my fault. Forget that. And I move to appoint Mr. Thomas Evelyn as a Director of Emergency Management pursuant to a Code of Virginia, Section forty-four dash one forty-six dot nineteen, and as a Director of Emergency Services pursuant to County Code, Chapter thirty dash one sixty-one. I'll let somebody else
Thank you, Mr. Moyer.
Yes.
Ms. Watkins, will you poll the members on the appointment of Director of Emergency Management?
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
I move to appoint Chief Rickel Pett as a Coordinator of Emergency Management pursuant to Code of Virginia, Section forty-four dash one forty-six point one nine, and as Coordinator of Emergency Services pursuant to County Code, Chapter thirty dash one sixty-two. Ms. Watkins, will you poll the members on the appointment of Coordinator of Emergency Management?
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye. Thank you. I believe we have one closed session item this evening?
Yes, I move to go into closed session pursuant to Virginia Code, Section two-point-two dash three seven one one A one for discussion of the performance and discipline of the specific public officer, specifically a member of the Board of Supervisors.
Thank you, Mr. Moyer. Ms. Watkins, will you poll the members?
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye. Probably won't we won't have any business when we come out of closed session, so the next regular scheduled meeting of the Board of Supervisors will be held at six p.m. on February tenth, two thousand twenty-five, and the next work session will be held at nine a.m. on January twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-five. Yep, January twenty-seventh, both in the boardroom of the County Administration Building. All right, so we'll be going to closed session.
Oh, sure, I will. Yes. Yes, we did. We voted, and we'll vote to go out of it then.